One, two.
You're watching GCTV, Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
Greenfield School Committee on Monday, January 13th, 2020 at 6:34 PM in the City Hall Conference Room at 14 Court Square. We have GCTV here recording. Is anyone else recording? Melina from the recorder is also recording. And we will start with a roll call from the secretary. Oh, we also have a member attending remotely. Member Hollins is on the phone and thus all votes will be roll call votes this evening. Secretary Johnson, would you take the roll call, please?
Member Karen?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Here.
Chair Piretti?
Here.
Mayor Wiedegardner?
Here.
Member Hollins?
Here.
Member Hollins, will you state the reason why you're participating remotely tonight?
I'm out of state.
Member Johnson?
Uh, Member Johnson, I am here.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here for public comment tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will move right on to new business. I will entertain a motion to reverse the order of the agenda items A and B in new business so that we can accommodate Coach and his hockey game.
So, seconded.
We have a movement from Member Ekstrom, a second from Member Karen. All those in favor, well, we need a roll call vote.
Yes, Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Chair Piretti?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegardner?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Johnson, yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Coach, let's hear from you about co-op football.
Sure. First of all, I congratulate everybody on the newly appointed positions. Uh, good luck. Appreciate the...
Thank you. Gotcha.
For our school, I appreciate that. So, um, what's happening in the state of football really is our numbers are dwindling faster than what we thought. And we finished off the season in Greenfield this year with approximately seventeen to eighteen kids. And out of those seventeen, eighteen kids, there was six freshmen. And it's become a safety issue of putting kids in positions that they shouldn't be in. And a lot of kids aren't playing because of that. We're taking the opportunity out of their hands because really a fourteen-year-old kid does not want to go in and thinking that they have to play against an eighteen-year-old. That's kind of what's happening. Our seventh and eighth grade team has dwindled a little bit. They've had fifteen to eighteen kids. This year particularly, we had nine, uh, ten eighth graders. Out of those ten eighth graders, there's a few of them that will play, but some of them won't because of the situation that we're in. The seventh graders, we only had four seventh graders. So seeing the numbers down the road, we're going to be devastating to our program. Um, in North Country and Mohawk, and I can't consider Turners in North Country, across the river, they have co-opted. They co-opted this past year because Turners did not have enough players to be able to have a team. So they used to co-opt with Pioneer. Pioneer didn't have any kids at all to participate with Turners, so they had to find another route to go. So Mohawk had less than twenty. So they decided to have an emergency co-op. It was all the news. And they got a team, they had twenty-six kids combined to be able to do Mohawk and Turners. This year, it's a little different. They completed the season. They, um, they had about twenty-one, twenty-two kids. But going forward, Turners was only going to have about six kids returning. And, um, Mohawk had, let me just make sure if I said this right. Of course, you don't have the glasses. Uh, they would have, gonna have ten to twelve. Out of the six kids that Turners had, four of them showed no interest of going to Mohawk anymore. Um, and also Turners was gonna have a tough time because their blessing numbers were extraordinary to be able to bring their kids up there. So seeing our numbers that we look like that we're gonna have about eighteen kids coming back, it was for safety reasons that maybe we should start a three-team co-op. With Turners and Mohawk. That would put our numbers projected around thirty-six, which is a healthy number considering the league that we play in. It's, I think it's a doable thing because of the fact that if we don't do something now, I think down the road, it might come back and not have any team at Greenfield be able to play football. It's, it's not what I want to do. I don't want to, I don't want to do this. I don't want, I want Greenfield to have their own football team. That's my goal. And what co-ops are supposed to do are not gonna be an end-all for everything. It's to build the program back up. And what we're seeing is that our younger kids aren't playing because they have to be thrown into the fire right away. If we, and I project this, if we have a co-op, those younger kids won't have to play. They can play JV at the level that they're supposed to be playing in. Our older kids are gonna be able to compete in all three, at all three schools are usually eleventh and twelfth graders. And that's the purpose of a co-op, to be able to be a safety issue, a factor that we're trying to build those programs back up. These are only one or two years. If we can keep, keep it going for one or two years and build our numbers back up to where they're supposed to be, the co-op is ended. Once we get up over, say that we have thirty Greenfield kids, which I foresee that happening eventually down the road, then we say, okay, Turners might have enough kids to be able to have their own team. Mohawk might be able to have enough kids to have their own team. I have not seen that happen, and I'll be honest with you, in, in other schools because really there's no football co-ops. There's hockey co-ops everywhere because hockey's a little bit different, different energy. Um, with football, there hasn't been a lot of football co-ops. I know there's some schools out east in Central Mass that do it. But this is news to me. It's something, again, I think to be able to sustain our football program at Greenfield. We're centralized location. And I know the big word out there is regionalization in schools. And it's something I think that we'll all have to deal with in the next ten years about regionalization of schools. It's starting in sports. Um, I think that you'll see it happening in more sports as we go forward. That's kind of where I'm at. I wanted to make sure that everybody was on board because I don't want to, I don't want to pull any secrets. I wanted to, the community to know. Mohawk is going in front of their administration on Wednesday. Turners is kind of really, they don't have a team, so they're just looking for anything. Pioneer has been mentioned, but their kids that want to play football are all going to tech school. And tech school is taking a lot of kids, and not, not in a bad way. Uh, I think the tech school is a great, great thing. They had a hundred and fifty-three incoming freshmen last year. And it kind of devastated what Turners was doing for, for sports and things like that. But, you know, it's not, it's for a good reason that the tech school is doing what they're doing. Okay, that's the society they got now. So, um, that's kind of where we stand.
Okay.
If you have any questions, feel free to ask them. The MIAA has a timeline for this. And that's what we, that our governmental board, for some people who don't know, is Massachusetts International Athletic Association. And you have to have a co-op, a new co-op, six months in between before the first practice of the year. So we're, we're doing it early. We're wanting it in by February first for the PBIC to be able to vote on. Once it goes from the PBIC, if it's a, if it's a first from you, if it's an okay, if it's a yes vote from you, it goes in front of the AVs of the PBIC. And then after that, it gets, goes into the DAC, which is an MIAA board that we have in District F, which what we are is District F, soon to be District One because of the realignment association that's going on. There's a lot of different things that are happening in the MIAA.
Fairly.
And I could sit here and tell you everything for the next hour that we've been contemplating within the MIAA. And that's something down the road that with this co-op, it's gonna be beneficial down the road because of realignments that's gonna happen within the next year or two. So Karen, that's a quick gist of what we're asking. Feel free to shoot away any questions you might have.
Thank you. Who has questions?
Me.
It's the Member Ekstrom.
Um, so I, I think that's a great idea. I think that unfortunately with all the, all the television with all CTE and kids getting injured, and everyone's worried about head injuries, all those things, which is not my point here, but I think parents are becoming more concerned and more cautious about their kids playing football, or a football house. And so we're all about football. I'm curious, this is unrelated. Isn't that, if, if we did something like this, that we could expand it to say Turners has a pool? Yeah, like a good pool? Could it be that we have a co-op swim team or things like that? Just because if it works, it works, and why shortchange everyone?
To answer that question, the MIAA has numbers that you can, that you have to have. If you have, for example, football is thirty. If you have less than thirty, then you'll be able to ask for a co-op. The school that's opposed has to initiate the co-op. We've never done that. I don't know when the last time we had thirty kids. It might have been about 2011, 12. I never, ever really wanted a co-op. We had everything going and, you know, we had the kids that we wanted to do. We played with fourteen kids, fifteen kids in varsity.
Yeah.
So the school that has the sport, so for Turners Falls, for example, they have swimming. I'm not sure of the number. I'm gonna say, let's say it's twelve. If they have over twelve kids, they cannot have a co-op. They are, they are standalone, it has to be standalone.
That seems so strange.
And I'm just throwing that number.
Yeah, I know, sure. I mean...
So there are numbers that we have to abide by with this.
Yeah.
You know, um, so I can get those numbers. I don't know for all the sports.
Just anecdotal.
But I know there's a lot of sports that we are playing under those numbers and we choose not to do a co-op. Um, again, after this year, I'm very tired of trying to coach kids so we wouldn't get hurt.
Of course.
Um, and that was very stressful for me and our coaching staff. And I think it was more stressful for the kids. My, my son, I don't know if you know my son, he's five foot nothing, a hundred pounds. I had to put him into a varsity game. And he looked at me like, are you sure? And I'm like, yeah, I'm putting him in.
You put Trevor in a varsity game?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
So, and all the kids were looking at me and I go, well, you know, what am I gonna do?
Yeah.
And so that kind of was how I said, you know, not because it was my own son, there was other kids out there.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That, you know, but I'm just saying that for the example of that. But, um, you know, that's why we're, we're sitting here now, so...
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Other questions?
Yeah, I have one. Explain to me, I'm missing this, because co-op schools are not something I'm familiar with. I mean, co-op teams is not something I'm familiar with at all. I don't, how does it build individual teams over time?
Be able to sustain, to keep our teams established, you mean?
Well, you said, you said that it's one to two years, so in hopes that Turners could build a team and Mohawk could build a team. How does, this is...
I don't know the perfect scenario.
Okay.
But I, for, in my mind, I think that if our younger kids see that we have a JV program. So, for example, we might have six kids that are gonna be incoming freshmen that have to play varsity. Three of those kids figure it out, they're not gonna play. Six kids see that we have a JV program, I'm competing against like ages, they'll stick it out.
Okay.
We're hoping that happens in Turners. We're hoping that happens in Mohawk, so some of those kids will be able to establish and their numbers get higher.
Okay.
That's kind of, I'm hoping that happens. I'm not gonna tell you, say here, that's gonna happen.
Oh.
I don't know. Um, that's the goal. Um, I know that there was a hockey co-op in Holyoke that grew its numbers in, with South Addy. South Addy took it over and there's no more co-op. South Addy now has enough kids to be able to have their standalone hockey club. So that's kind of where I'm going with this. You know, I, we have a co-op for hockey now with all the Frank County schools. But the model that we, we went after with that was the FCHA model, Frank County Hockey Association. All the counties play in Greenfield together since they were five, six years old. And when they got to ninth grade, those, all those kids went away. So they had nowhere to play. And our numbers went from, I think when I first started in 2005, our numbers went from twenty-five, twenty-six Greenfield kids to nine when we first started, the first, first year of the Smith, our Athol co-op. And now we're in everybody in the league just because we couldn't do it. Turners started trying to do their own team and they had to drop because they didn't have enough kids. So it was just a natural fit to bake it at FCHA. And everybody that we play in the league wants to have us in the league because of competition.
I would think it would also just be like a good PR move. You know, now you have three towns that are talking about a football team and their families, everyone's going to the games together and, and therefore it becomes more talked about.
What is the decision that we are required to do?
So, that's a good point. So for now, because we missed the deadline to post this in forty-eight hours ahead of, of time for open meeting law, we can take in information tonight and ask questions. We cannot take a vote this evening. I do anticipate being able to meet your February one deadline based on the fact that we likely will have to call another special school committee meeting this month to do an executive session specifically. But we can add that for a vote at that time. So, good question. Superintendent Harper?
Question, can you talk a little bit about what you're hearing from parents and how parents of players you would expect would receive this?
Well, I've talked to kids because that's my main concern. The kids, if, if, if something like this happened hypothetically. And the kids I have talked to are for it because of the fact they saw how things were going with our, our, our team this year. Again, we had a sophomore that had to play. We had a freshman that had to play. We had two major injuries. We had one major injury with a freshman that had a, an injury that was devastating for the kid. Now, would that have happened if he was a sophomore or junior? Maybe because just the nature of the injury. But it made, it made us look a little bit at the biggest picture, bigger picture. And I think kids get that. None of them were against it, all of them were for it. Most of these kids know each other. You know, they like the competition. They want competition. I've got kids that want to get in the weight room because they hear this stuff's happening. I want my position. And I, because I say to them, I go, what happens to that kid from Mohawk is better than you or is going to take your position. I'm not gonna let that happen. That's the answer you want to hear as a coach. You're not gonna, you know, we had a co-op when I first got to Greenfield in, in '04. And, um, it was with Pioneer. And then Pioneer went and became a standalone team back in that time. So they made their own team, so the co-op is abolished. But I've heard positive things. I haven't heard any negative things from, um, community members. Again, it's not really out there. It's been in the infancy stages, so I really haven't, you know, put it out there because I want to make sure that we're doing it the right steps.
And Mike, as I understand, we have enough kids to play if we kept our Greenway team as it is, but you've expressed these safety concerns and you think this is the right move for the future?
We lost seven, seven seniors and it looks like we'll gain four eighth graders. So it would be anywhere between eighteen and twenty kids. And that's not from any kids that might just leave or not play or what have you. And there's been rumors of that. So I, you know, I can't really react to rumors, but I just have to see what the numbers are.
Other questions?
Coach, is this a revenue generating opportunity for Greenfield?
I can't answer that. I think if we had, well, yeah, I guess it would be. Because if we had thirty-six kids, there'd probably be eighteen more sets of parents coming to a game than what we have now.
Hot dogs, that's what we're talking about.
You know, so the ticket sales might go up a little bit. And, and the hockey parents might be happy in the concession stand. So, yeah, I would say yes, but I mean, it's, it's ticket sales that go on a revolving account. So, um, but yeah, we guess, yeah. Not much.
Had to ask. I feel like I had to ask. Any other questions? We appreciate your time. Thank you for being here. And like I said, we, we are anticipating we will have another session, another meeting before your February first deadline and be able to make a vote at that time.
And again, it's, it's still with, Mohawk's gotta make some decisions. Turners gotta make decisions. You know, I'm not gonna do anything that's gonna be detrimental to us as a community. And everything that I, any decisions that's gonna happen is gonna come from you guys. I'm gonna make sure that you know what's happening. So I'm not gonna keep anybody out of the loop, believe me. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your hockey game.
If you wanna go, it's really cold, though.
Good luck.
Have a good night.
You too.
Congratulations.
Okay, so our next order of business is subcommittees. And I did pass around, did everyone get a copy of the draft? Member Hollins, I'm sorry, you do not have a copy of the, the draft, subcommittee assignments?
No, I don't.
Oh, oh, we can, Superintendent Harper is going to email it to you right now. God, I love technology.
I know. All the way to wherever you are.
And I, you know, I'm not really sure of the best approach with this. I did try my best to accommodate everyone's requests that I received, either verbally or through email. And I added, in addition to the committees that we talked about, we also, at the last, uh, meeting, which was budget, policy and program, health and safety, I'm sorry, it's cut off there, negotiations, personnel and contracts. And then the three representatives, which are the Collaborative for Education, city planning and construction, and the library building committee. And then one that was, I was reminded of, thank you, Member Johnson, reminding me of the SIC Bank, which is something that school committee does. And so that was added as well after the meeting. I guess I could open it up for comments. I don't know how the, to best approach this. How are people feeling about the assignments? Yes.
I, 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 this isn't about me. So, I requested budget and policy.
Yes.
You put me on policy and that is fine. I would just say, one, I'm delighted to see a budget subcommittee again. And two, um, all I would say is, oh, and did you email everyone the calendar last week? There was, last week there was a request to know how the...
The budget calendar.
Jives with the city calendar.
I did not email it to everyone, but we can, I will make a note of that.
Well, just so everyone has it.
Yep, I will do that right after the meeting.
Here we go.
Oh, she's just got the calendar.
Oh, great.
It's both. The city cal, this is the city calendar and it includes your deadline, the, the, our deadlines.
Thank you for bringing this.
I mean, you can have it emailed too, but I just thought it'd be important for you to have it tonight because, because as you can tell, the, in my mind, I just want to comment about this.
Sure.
Looking at it. The calendar is important. We need to stay on track this year as best we can. And you can see that there's not a lot of time left.
Yes.
So it's really important to see what your deadlines are. And I think the budget subcommittee ought to get started right away.
Yes.
That would be my thought.
So we've had, Superintendent Harper and I have had a couple of discussions related to budget. And one of them was our expectation that you would be able to sit in on any budget subcommittee that you so choose to.
Okay.
So you're welcome to attend and sit in on those. And we also wanted to be cognizant of your first year as mayor.
Oh, yes, thank you.
And the, your responsibilities to the city budget.
Yes.
And I did...
Yes, I'm just daunted by that calendar that you have, to assure you, on that, wearing that hat.
Um, and so I, I felt like the, the way I read your choices is your focus would be on budget. And I actually interpreted that as the city budget.
Yeah.
And then as I talked through the options with Superintendent Harper, we thought about your ability to just come and sit for anything.
Okay.
And hopefully we can have enough communication with the three other members there.
Yeah.
That you'll know very well what we're planning.
Okay.
And how things will work.
That addresses my second point on that particular committee. And that is, I, I really cannot stress enough how important, particularly this budget year, the communication with the city is, is paramount in, in what you, what you're thinking. So even if for some reason or other, um, I'm not able to attend, it's really important that, that if, that we have some sense of what, what's going on.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, could you, since I don't have what you're looking at in, in, could you read the, the...
Sure. The committees are budget and then it just are listed as member one, member two, and member three. Susan Ekstrom, Amy Piretti, Jean Wall. Policy and program, Glenn, Katie, Roxanne. Health and safety, et cetera. Katie, Susan, H, and Glenn. Negotiations, personnel, and, uh, I don't, I don't remember what it is.
Personnel and contracts.
And contracts. Susan Ekstrom, Katie and Amy. And then it has listed as a designee to the Collaborative for Educational Services, you, Susan Hollins, and representative to the city planning, what is it?
Yeah, planning and construction.
City planning and construction would be you. And then Jean is in parentheses. And then the representative to the library building would be Jean. And the SIC Bank designees are myself and Katie.
And I should comment about city planning and construction. We have a number of very smart folks working on whether or not Jean, who is currently chair of city planning and construction, can also serve in that capacity and as an elected school board member and will identify a path to reconciling that ethically as soon as possible. It came to our attention rather late, and so we're gonna try and resolve that as quickly as we can. And that's why Jean had actually offered to be the rep for city planning and construction. Mayor Wiedegardner, you also are on that, correct? So we, we have, uh, representation from a number of different angles. And we will figure out how to, how to proceed with that.
Would you restate who's on the, who's the representative to the collaborative?
That would be you. It, and again, this is a draft, but we, we said that that would be you at this point. Other comments?
What is SIC Bank?
What is SIC Bank?
I've never heard of it.
Uh, employees of the school department are eligible for SIC Bank requests. So, so people can donate, I guess, excess SIC time into a bank. And then when people have special access, you know, needs where they go beyond their SIC time, they can request to have that.
Get it back.
To get some.
So they can take it from the donated bank.
Yeah, that's okay.
From the donated bank. And it's a new system, so the, we're kind of building the plane as we fly it at times. But, uh, it's already been used a few times and it's been helpful to people.
Thank you.
One other, oh, yes, please, Member Ekstrom.
Can I be the person to be named later for the library? If you can't go, I would go.
Library, library building is not the one in question.
I know, I understand.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But like, sorry, I thought Jean can't attend. But you can call Susan and be like, hey, can you go? The runner-up could attend.
Yes.
I love the library.
The alternate.
Yes. I would move into a library and stay there happily for the rest of my life. So, by myself, with all my books.
With all my books.
You might get that chance.
Like, wow. All right.
Wonderful empty building over there.
Look, you have no idea. I would, anyway.
One other comment, I did not look at the size of the subcommittees previously when I made this. And I did kind of think to myself about size in terms of three, four, or five members. Uh, five members just seemed way too overwhelming. Four also kind of overwhelming, but also there's that odd number when it comes to a vote. Three seemed like with a school committee of six as a really manageable number without overwhelming all of us. What I would remind folks is that if there is a mem, if there is a subcommittee of three members, the only time you can have discussions about any of the business of that subcommittee is in a subcommittee meeting. It would be a violation of open meeting law if even just two of you have a conversation outside of that. So I'd make that, uh, make everyone aware of that now. What I'm not hearing is anyone really having any concerns or confusion?
Could I say something?
Sure, absolutely. Member Hollins, please.
I, I think I'm not well-suited to be the representative of the collaborative because of when they have their meetings. It's a very large board and I have been a collaborative director, but it isn't really one of my keen interests. I think it would be hard for me to make meetings. And my question is why some members are on one committee and others are on the three? I'm just interested in how you reasoned that.
I did my best to balance it. There were a couple of people who said, put me wherever and where... There were a couple of people who said, put me wherever and where, and for whatever, and I tried to do that. I, I wasn't aware of when the collaborative met, and that's my error. I probably should have found that out before I assigned someone. Certainly, if you're not available, we should take you off of that. Um, do you know when, you do know when the meetings are?
Um, I do not know when their meetings are. I just think it's, what, I think it would not be a good fit for me.
Okay. Jean, uh, Member Wall?
On the budget committee, because it's such a complicated committee to sit on, wouldn't it be better to have five members so that, say, two people, like, I could go in and talk to Roxanne about my budget concerns and not have that be, um, I mean, Roxanne were on it and Susan Hollins were on it in addition to the three you have, then we could...
A quorum of a full committee, though. You can't have a quorum of a full committee at a subcommittee. So you actually can't have four members because we are a seven-person board.
Thank you, Member Karen.
And so you have to have three or less because then it becomes a full committee meeting every time. That is the problem with a seven-person board. If we had nine, we could have more, it like, but it is inherently a...
I als, I truly, I also have concerns about the person who's mayor. And this isn't about you, it's not about Bill, it's not about anyone being involved in making budget decisions for the school district. Because as mayor should, they have that larger overall hat where they're thinking about all of it. And I'm concerned that some of that would feed into decisions that are being made. Whether that is the case or not, I'd, I'd prefer that it be not a questionable ethics concern.
Well, I, I, I disagree in that the mayor has the overall thing including the schools. And that if the mayor is not part of the collaboration, that's who it goes to anyway.
I'm not saying the mayor wasn't part of the collaboration. I, Bill sat and was a non-voting member of the budget committee. And I think that is absolutely appropriate.
Okay.
Um, I just, it was, it, I would have a lot of ethical concerns, as I would if it were me being mayor and someone, you know, it's not...
Mayor Weedegardner and then, or, Member Karen after that.
And you wanted to say?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, okay, I, I just wanted to address that. I, I had a question. In your capacity as, I mean, in your thinking about my being able to sit in, I assumed that it was a non-voting member.
Correct.
And I just wanted to clarify that. Um, I just, I, I wasn't planning on taking this time to remind everybody on the committee that under the charter, the mayor is a member of the school committee with all the rights and duties and responsibilities. Hence, a mayor can serve on any committee regardless of its...
Correct.
As a voting member as well, regardless of what committee that is.
Correct.
I just want everyone to remain clear about that for as long as I'm mayor and on this committee.
Okay.
Member Karen?
So one of the really important things to know, and this is me just talking, I guess, but anybody can attend any subcommittee meeting at any time. Um, there is, and I would, I'm hesitant to say this without really reviewing the policy, but in our policy work with MASC, it was sort of brought to our attention that if you attend a meeting as a non-subcommittee member, you actually are now a public member. So you're actually not participating in negotiations or pub talk. You can make public comments, you can hear anything you want. So I would like to review the policy before I make that as a final statement. And maybe Superintendent remembers better than I. But I think that that's how it works. And I plan to go to lots of budget meetings if I can, but...
Um, so both of the last comments that were made were both accurate. Uh, so Member Karen's correct that if anybody attends a meeting and they're not a subcommittee member, they're essentially there to listen and observe. If the, uh, committee, subcommittee is meeting at the table, they're generally asked even to, like, sit separately because they don't deliberate at the table. The distinction is that the mayor, by charter, as an ex officio member, can participate, can deliberate, has the other full rights of the, um, subcommittee members, but simply doesn't vote. So there's a sort of hybrid position by virtue of the office of mayor.
It's my understanding that the chairperson of the committee, subcommittee decides who is recognized to speak. And my experience over the last four years is that often, someone who's not on the committee was recognized by the chair to speak at the meeting.
Well, I think we just clarified that we would not have that happen. The role of the chair would be to make sure that anyone who's attending who's not a voting member would be treated as a member of the public.
We could send up the policy, the exact language for clarification.
I'm trying, yeah, I'm trying to remember it. The, we clear, we did clear up language. I don't know that that policy has gone to second, right, does that one go? So there's a little bit of...
I know, I, just personal history, I know that I attended budget meetings and was permitted to speak, but I didn't, just, but I wasn't allowed to vote. And I asked a bunch of questions and hoped there was, and stuff.
So we'll clarify that.
And, and where, where are all these rules? I've never seen them, that everybody's saying.
It's our, it's our policy manual. So they're all online on our website.
You don't have a book?
No, we don't anymore because we moved to an online, and they're all going to be updated. So we're continuing to update them, and we're working the Mass Association of School Committees to do that updating. The policy manuals, when printed, are about that big, and there's a copy of each of the schools. And then when we do all this policy work, everybody gets their own copy. So they are online, but they, we do not maintain, um, we have a reference copy in the superintendent's office, which you're welcome to look at and peruse, but we don't have individual member copies. But I'll send up the relevant policy to this one.
I mean, they're searchable on the website, it's just not paper. And I don't know, oh, like, our first reading ones, are those anywhere? That they could find them? Like, the ones we've had gone through first reading, our new committee members that they want to read them?
I, I was at the last school committee, well, not the last one, I was there too, but...
They're in public, they've been released, but to public.
Prior to...
Prior to the meeting, they were discussed that, so you can find them. And if someone's interested, I will try to, like, if you want me to send you a first reading, send me an email to remind me, and I will take the time to try to find them for you.
Okay.
It may take me a couple of days, it's a little hard to weed through sometimes, but...
So they're with the materials for any public meeting?
Right.
So if they were in the September two thousand nineteen school committee meeting, they're published on the materials on our webpage. But there's not a separate section of the webpage for first readings that haven't yet been approved because of not current policy.
So it'll, yeah, like, I can find them for you, but it takes a minute.
Thank you. Other comments, questions about the subcommittee assignments? Okay. Member Karen?
Um, in my mind, I was making an assumption that the member one was who were intending to be the chair of that subcommittee. Were you hoping the subcommittee would, uh, nominate their own chair? Or, I did initially thought...
My, my style is that the subcommittee would do, um, their decision-making about who would chair and lead. I'm fine with that.
That's fine with me, I just...
Um, I should clarify that I do expect that the work of the c, subcommittees would be, would come to the subcommittees at the direction of either the chair or the full school committee. And not, the subcommittees would not be making their o, their own work to do, but it would come directly from this body. So I think it makes sense, uh, we probably should have put a motion on the table before we had all that discussion.
We'd do that sometime.
So, um, chalk that up to be a new, uh, Member Karen?
I move to accept the subcommittee assignments as presented.
Second.
With the, sorry, Susan Hollins does not want to be on the...
With the collaborative currently being blank, and we'll revisit that at another time. Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have to do a roll call, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
And, and with the understanding that it sounds like there's still clarification about the city and planning and construction rep?
Correct. We will get clarification and we will solidify that as soon as possible. Member Wall?
I am already appointed to the library building committee by the mayor. So if, uh, Susan wants to be the official rep for the school committee, wouldn't that work?
I think that is a better, I did not realize you were also on the library building committee, I'm sorry.
Can that be?
So we can make a friendly amendment to current, to change the motion on the table to now be that Susan Ekstrom would be our library building committee representative, and Jean would remain as the appointee from the mayor. Is that clear to everyone? And the motion came from you, Member Karen, correct? And do you accept that motion?
Yes.
A friendly amendment to the motion? Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you know what, what is the purpose of the mayor's designee as the library representative? Is that a new appointment or a previous one?
Um, I can answer that. I was the one who put it on there. Um, it's important, during the whole deliver, all of the public here, public meetings on the library and many discussions, um, there were staff members from the schools that talked about how important your relationship with the li, the school's relationship with the public library is because of short staffing and there are all the different things that we encounter, um, a school, uh, in our school budget and as our, in our school staffings for libraries. So I felt it was really important to have a school committee voice and at least knowledge of what is being discussed as we begin to, the, 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 the library building, the library itself isn't yet set in stone. It's, you know, it's, the building committee exists because we still have work to do. So I think it's important for someone from the schools to have a, a pulse on that. Also, non, as I recall, I could certainly go get the paperwork, it's right on my desk, um, the school committee rep is not a, is a non-voting member, they're just there.
And so is the, is, were you thinking of Jean being the...
Well, I wasn't thinking about it at all, no.
And appointed?
No, I, I really wasn't. I mean, sometimes it's good to double up. Um, Amy McMahon is a member of the, this is an example. Is a member of the city planning and construction committee, she's a member of the planning board. And I have her on the public safety, um, building committee. I suggested to Eric Forog, um, 'cause there's also a planning board member by designee of the planning board chair. I suggested to Eric that the chair of the planning board trials might, might want to just make it Amy. So that, you know, other planning board members who are busy don't have to do it. But that's literally up to them.
But, but it does sound like Jean, Jean has been involved with the library and building project for...
From Gepka.
Sorry, Member Wall, for quite a long time.
Yeah.
And, uh, and is now newly also on the school committee. So she's sort of uniquely poised to advise on the library project. And then now also has the liaison role to the school committee, so, no?
I would give up the liaison role to the school committee and let Susan have that role.
But, but it sounds like the nature of the appointment is the liaison, right?
Yeah, but it, it could be anybody in my mind. I, I didn't even think...
But we only need one.
Jean wasn't elected when I made that list, I put it that way.
So would you stand on the library project otherwise?
I am a voting member of the library building committee. This post would not be a voting member of the library committee.
But, uh, my understanding is that the mayor-appointed member, Wall, for, not necessarily because you're on the school committee, but because of all the other qualifications and experience and respect.
She was already an existing member.
Yeah. And that, and so the, the proposal is, since Member Ekstrom is interested, to have Member Ekstrom be the official representative from the school committee, which would be a non-voting, uh, seat on that group. And it, it sounds like you're open to that, happy?
I, absolutely, you're kidding me. Be cool.
And allow, and allows both of them to serve on the committee. One is a voting member, one is a non-voting member, correct? Am I right? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And just to be, show where we are on the, in the order of the, the, of business. Member Karen had made that motion.
Yes.
And you accepted it as a friendly amendment to have Member Ekstrom in there. And so who seconded that motion?
I'm not sure who it did, I assumed it too.
You seconded, you seconded the motion when I made it. So do you also accept the friendly amendment, I think is what Member Wall says.
Yeah, I understand what he's asking. I was about to do it, and then I think we launched into a discussion, so, so I second.
Thank you all. Thank you, Member Johnson, for keeping us as parliamentarian. We may look to, we could probably add you at the bottom here as parliamentarian.
Yeah, right, easily.
Okay, further discussion before we take our roll call vote. Hearing none? Uh, Member Johnson, would you take the vote, please?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Chair Priety?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Johnson, yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you all, good work. Okay. And we are now on to, uh, pursuant to Mass General Law, calling an executive session um, to discuss a strategy respective to collective bargaining or litigation. Do I have to read the whole thing?
Yes.
You should.
Yes, you do.
And...
Or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public, the public body and the, and the chair so declares, and I declare.
And the purpose is custodial and cafeteria.
And the purpose is custodial and cafeteria. Uh, do I have a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Are you going to be entering back into public session?
There is no plan to enter back into public session.
Except to adjourn.
We would enter briefly to adjourn, yes.
I'll second Karen, Katie's...
Member Karen with the motion, uh, Member Weedegardner with the second. Roll call vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Chair Priety?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
We'll have a roll call, call vote to adjourn.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Absolutely.
Chair Priety?
Yes.
Mayor Weedegardner?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Johnson, yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Seven twenty-seven P.M.
So far, we're doing pretty good.